Good evening and welcome. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a public meeting, public hearing meeting, of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, September 7th, 2023 at 6:35 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, as down broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you very much for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Lugo. To approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. All right, Secretary Boswell, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledge to the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. So next, we have an opportunity for the public to share comments with the Board. This time, allow speakers to comment publicly pertaining to the Texas Education, or TEA, Special Education Proposed Agreed Order. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public hearing portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks. Tonight, we have six who signed up to speak in person and 10 recorded remarks. In order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period at this meeting, each speaker will be allotted one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. Callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called. As you come to the microphone, there is a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time. And when the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. Again, we ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise that you reference the staff member by position or by abbreviated last name. And we ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for others at all times. We, the Office of Translation and Interpretation provides a Spanish-language translator for audience members who need assistance when addressing trustees or need assistance understanding comments made to trustees during public testimony. I believe tonight, we won't need a translator. Is that correct, Dr. Reach? Okay, cool, thank you. So I will just say the names of our speakers so you can kind of be ready to line up. Our speakers tonight are Sharon Vane, and then Lisa Flores, George Lob, Kelly Dawn, Ken Zerifus, Addison McKenna. So we will start with Sharon Vane.
Thank you. Hello, I'm AISD parent Sharon Vane. I have grave concerns about the proposal before the Board this evening. There is no dispute that we need a better system to serve our special education students. However, this proposal creates additional problems with far-reaching and potentially disastrous impacts. It requires multiple changes to Board policy and governance, changes that must stay in place for five years, thus impacting any superintendent search as well as how this Board can meet, speak, oversee large-scale spending, and engage with stakeholders. It relies on Lone Star Governance, whose training and star-focused success metrics may not align with district plans and scorecards or even the values of the Austin ISD community. I fear that this is the first stop on the road to an official takeover of our district, which would have catastrophic effects. I strongly urge an attempt to amend this, to remove the Lone Star Governance handcuffs so you can continue your forward momentum towards improving special education. Thank you.
Next, we have Lisa Flores.
Can I just go? Hello, my name is Lisa Flores. I'm a parent and engaged disability advocate. I've served countless hours as a volunteer to lend my expertise to be part of solutions for improvement of special education in Austin ISD. I've been advocating for years in this arena. Some of my suggestions has even made their way into some of our improvements tonight, although I will never get the credit. I think I've earned more than a minute to comment tonight till I ask in advance that you forgive me when I run over time. Hopefully, cop won't have to tackle me. I've read the proposal really carefully, and here are some of my points that I think have not been discussed. Number one, Lone Star Governance is not research or evidence-based to improve outcomes where it's been implemented. Number two, it's disingenuous for the Board to be voting on a proposal that includes Lone Star Governance like something to be completed when it already has been completed, and the monitors are probably here tonight. Number three, Lone Star Governance seems to broker in a weird delusion like trickle-down economics, except for human behavior, that somehow if our Board changes their behavior will reflect in better outcomes for students. Respectfully, if this wishful thinking was true, we would already be a disability-specific inclusive district. I struggle to see any real-world connection between the Board limiting how they govern affecting kids in classrooms. Lone Star Governance makes an assumption of integrity and ethics in a superintendent. To be clear, I do believe Matias has these qualities, but he may not stay. We don't have a permanent superintendent. It also presumes superintendents have specific knowledge and disability, which they do not and is not required. AISD has just professed
I'm so sorry.
professed shared responsibility and in accepting Lone Star Governance, you will not have that. Please take Lone Star Governance and any attempt to change policy to limit your oversight out of this.
Okay, next, next we have George Lob. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is George Lob. I'm a parent of a pre-K4 at Dawson Elementary. I'd like to see a show of hands for anyone on the Board that believes the following scenario is an example of Texas hospitality and how to show leadership in a district. Adrian Pardea was hired this summer to serve as a certified special ed teacher at Dawson Elementary. This morning, he was informed that he would be sent to another campus. As you know, Dawson Elementary is underperforming and needs talent like Adrian there. Adrian brought his family of four from the Philippines. He was invited here to serve in this community. He got an apartment across the street from Dawson, so his three kids could go to Dawson, and then he could go to school or go to work without a car. When asked why, he wasn't given an explanation as to why he was moved. Two hours ago, I asked HR, they blamed sped, and sped blamed HR. So what I see is a lack of leadership here. So I'd like a show of hands here for those who think dragging a sped teacher from the Philippines to Austin, Texas, and then rerouting him as if he were chattel is part of your idea of Texas hospitality. So a show of hands?
Thank you, sir.
Anybody? No, I know, but it's a question. I expect an answer, please. I think I'm entitled to it.
We don't engage in that way in public comment, but we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I know you should appreciate it, but why can't you raise your hand?
So I'll call the next speaker up, and I'm happy to engage with you afterwards. Thank you.
Well, no, well, this is the time to engage with me. I'm here.
Your minute is up, sir.
You don't want to raise your hand?
Please be seated. Next, we have Kelly Dawn. Thank you. Kelly Dawn? Okay. Next, we have Ken Zerifus.
Good evening. My name is Ken Zerifus, President of Education, Austin. We'd like to thank the superintendent and this Board for doing something that for 15 years administrations have not been able to do, and that's to meet demands on testing and hiring in this district around special ed. But there's a long way to go, and we know that. There's an area, there are three areas in this agreement that we would like to take focus on. One, that we want to encourage the Board and the superintendent to engage with the Commissioner. One is around an appeals process. We believe there should be the ability to appeal. Two is the 50% on student outcomes. We know that the work of student outcomes is clear and that we want to make sure that the Board has the ability to deal with that. But 50% of every meeting means that we can't address all the issues in the district, and we need to be able to do that. Number three, any curriculum developed needs to be created with teachers that are doing this in the classroom, that are developing around best practices. These three areas, we'd like you to engage with the Commissioner around flexibility. Continue to do the good work. We know we've got a long ways to go, but you're on your way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm going to call again to see if Kelly Dawn is here. Thank you. We will now play the recorded messages, so please listen carefully. Oh, I'm sorry. Addison. Thank you, Addison.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Segura. My name is Addison. I am a special education student. From a student perspective, special education isn't working. We continually lose trust and hope and fall further and further behind our normative peers. We repeatedly have to fight to be able to participate in activities that our peers automatically get to do, and meaningful inclusion has yet to exist. We are an afterthought, always someone else's problem. Despite all the issues I face on a daily basis being a special education student, I am concerned about the TEA proposal, just as my IEP doesn't set me up for success. This plan does not set the district up for success. It doesn't provide the support or resources necessary to address the issues at hand. This is more than fixing a problem about backlogged special education evaluations. There is, there are systemic issues in special education that need to be addressed, and the TEA proposal is not the way to do it. Please do not vote for this proposal and consider other solutions to help the Special Education Department, who serves students like me. Thank you.
Thank you, Addison. And we will now play the recorded messages, so please listen carefully. Thank you.
Thanks for focusing on special ed needs. As the mother of a special education student in a Title I school with more than 30% of its students being classified as sped, and there's still more waiting for evaluation, so we think that percent is going to go up, I want to raise awareness about an issue that's impacting students and teachers. Students who are sped require more care. The funding received from the state counts kids as 1.5 or 2 based on extra support that needed for that child. AISD should use that formula when determining class size. A class of 24 English-speaking students in a Title I school with 30% of those kids being sped is not the same as a class of 24 students in a more affluent school with a lower number of sped students. That class of 24 means that a bit more than 7% of the students have needs that are more than one child. Really, that class's functioning is having 28 to 31 students. It's unmanageable for general education teachers, and it's stressful for all the students to be put in that position. Valuable time is taken away from learning. Please put policies in place to include sped allocations and leveling, and also take into account the percentage of students who are economically disadvantaged. Thank you for centering kids.
Hi there, AISD trustees. Thank you for your service to our districted students. My name is Heather Rell, and I'm an AISD parent of two students, one at Lymane and one at Merkison. I'm calling today to talk about the TEA conservatorship for special education. I have a special education student, and although I'm not happy with the way that the district's ed special education system has been run, I'm asking our Board not to go forward with the Lone Star Governance model. The Lone Star Governance is not research or evidence-based to improve outcomes where it's been implemented. And AISD has just engaged in a training to really go for a shared responsibility for the special education model. The org chart is still being revamped, yet our trustees will have very limited participation in interventions and collaborations due to the narrow definitions of the Lone Star Governance model. We all agree our students' needs are not being met, and changes need to happen. We have elected you and trust you to help. Lone Star Governance takes your voice away. We saw what happened to special education when you voted your power away to the superintendent last time. Things got significantly worse under the promise of getting better solutions. Please continue to be our voice, keep your power, and don't repeat the same mistake. Thank you for your time and attention.
60 seconds is not nearly enough time to discuss the multitude of issues with this proposal. For many, this proposal amounts to a secret takeover, of which it imposes stricter guidelines than even a sped monitor would, and nearly guarantees a takeover. The Board gives up future rights and remedy as well. We are pleading with the Board, please do not agree to this proposal. Please ask TEA to accept the district's reported progress and an improvement plan with timelines such as those included in the proposal. Say no to Lone Star Governance. This is not what's best for kids. We ask the Board not to agree to anything that changes its governance or oversight, including grievance, hiring policies, expenditures, any and all. Doing so previously exacerbated the issues in special education. The proposal is not reasonably calculated to bring relief to its purported target, students and students with disabilities, and seems to be merely an ongoing effort to get control of Austin ISD, including its Board. This is Marie. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Matias. My name is Letitia Anderson, parent and former trustee. I'm calling related to the impending vote with TEA and special education in Austin ISD. TEA was found noncompliant by the U.S. Department of Education for not ensuring that students who receive special education services were indeed getting those services. So how can this same agency in turn ensure that the students in Austin ISD who need special education services are indeed getting those services? Trustees, I have some questions. Where are you in the process of Lone Star Governance training? The previous Board took Lone Star Governance training and started to put processes in place to ensure that 50% or more of the agenda was student outcome focused. So where are you in that process? Or has the process reverted back to being heavily operational focused? Trustees, please consider the vote you are about to make.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Ramirez. I'm a parent of a student who receives special education services in Austin ISD as well as an employee in the Special Education Department in AISD. I'm just calling to ask the Board to reject the TEA proposals for the newest proposal for sped. I believe that it amounts to basically a takeover and diminishes the Board's power for now and in the future, of which we cannot get it back once we've signed that away. So thank you for listening. Bye.
Hello, my name is Natalia Olivera, and I am the parent of two students in AISD. This is regarding the special education issues. We are pleading with the Board to please do not agree to this proposal. This imposes stricter and more onerous guidelines than the original proposal of the special ed monitor. And it seems designed so that AISD fails and the TEA takes over. The Board gives up future rights and the ability to appeal as well. Please ask the TEA to accept the district's reported progress and an improvement plan with timelines such as those included in the proposal. Please say no to Lone Star Governance. We ask that the Board not agree to anything that changes its governance or oversight, including grievance, hiring policies, expenditures, any and all. The proposal is not reasonably calculated to bring relief to special education students or families, and it really seems part of an ongoing effort to get control of AISD, including its Board. Thank you.
This is Deborah Terhua, a parent of a child with special needs in AISD and parent of several who have, to have left the district with disabilities. I'm asking that AISD turn the page and share plans and progress with respect to special education inclusion with the community. That AISD operate in a spirit of transparency and cease treating parents who are attempting to obtain a meaningful education as combatants and enemies, and begin to be more open and transparent with records and with a plan for actually including all students and training all general educators to include all students in the room. Much of what is in the TEA proposed order is long overdue and has been long requested by myself and other members of the community, including the Coalition for Special Education Equity. We look forward to you beginning to truly be partners with us, to outreach with us, and recognize that we all have a stake in all of our students actually receiving a meaningful, free, and appropriate public education. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Kay Tieran. I'm a parent, and I'm calling regarding the special, special education hearing. I believe that a lot of the focus in Austin ISD on special education problems has been on the assessment backlog. I would like you to also review your special education inclusion programs. At my children's middle school, there are general education classrooms with 35 students, 22 of whom have IEPs or 504 plans. The inclusion support for all of those students is provided by a single TA with minimal training. This is not meeting the needs of individuals, of the individuals in the class. We can do better. We must. Please invest in and review the inclusion programs so all children can learn. Thank you.
My name is Craig Blom. I have a son in sped programs at Austin ISD. I wish to urge the Board not to approve the proposed agreement with Texas Education Agency regarding monitoring. This agreement contains language and conditions which are vague and appear to be intentionally designed for the district to fail and bring about a takeover of the district similar to the one in Houston with the concomitant bad effects for Austin students. I do not wish to see this happen to the district. Our students deserve better. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mary Felby, and I am a parent of a student within AISD. I am calling and with a comment in regards to the special education session tonight, and I wanted to ask and remind our district to keep in mind the voices of those who might not be at the table tonight. Keep in mind the voices of the parents and students within our system who are in need of special education and are needing their voice and their power to be represented. And please keep in mind to keep the power within our school district. I know there's some information about the proposal that some see and possibly might be that the power is going to be moved somewhere else, and I highly encourage the district to take a look and to make the correct, a better decision in favor of the community. Thank you so much for your time. Take care. Bye.
This concludes public testimony. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? Okay, so next, we have a discussion on the TEA, Special Education Proposed Agreed Order. On August 30th, the Texas Education Agency presented to the district an alternative plan for Austin ISD to consider in response to the special education investigation into special education in Austin ISD. The Board is also tentatively scheduled to continue this discussion as needed during our Thursday, September 14th Board Information Session. And that's next Thursday. The order from TEA asks that the Board take formal action on this letter before the end of the month. And the Board may consider action during the regular voting meeting on Thursday, September 21st, or could schedule a special meeting prior to the end of the month. So we are not voting on anything tonight. Mr. Segura, can you introduce the item, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, Presidents Singh and Trustees. We are here tonight to provide an update on TEA's Special Education Proposed Agreed Order. I'd like to invite up, actually already here in front of us, Dr. Drew Robinett, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, Ms. Pam Kaminsky from Rogers, Smores, and Grover for Austin ISD, and Ms. Christine Baddiel from Walsh-Gago's for the Austin Independent School Board. And so with that, we'll start on with the presentation. Feel free to proceed.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Good. The last time I was here, first of all, thank you very much for having me here this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to update you, as well as the public, on where we are as a district with the issues with TEA. So when I was last here, I was by Zoom, you may recall, and we reviewed kind of where things were at that point. That was April 3rd, I believe, was the date. March 31st, the district had received the special investigation unit from TEA, their final report. And that's what we were reviewing at that time, trying to make decisions on where to move forward from there. That report made a recommendation to the TEA Commissioner to put a conservator or a management team, which is a group of conservators, more than one, in place for Austin ISD. The Board ultimately decided on April 17th. We filed an request for an informal review, and May 10th was an opportunity for representatives from the district to move forward with having that conversation with the Commissioner. We just received last week, just to give you kind of the timeline here for everyone to be caught up at the same spot. Last week, on August 30th, we received a proposed agreed order that has, as President Singh mentioned, has a deadline of September 29th for the district to determine if it will sign and agree to this proposed order or not. There are a number of facts that we need to kind of run through. We want to just educate everyone as to what's in this proposed agreed order. You can find it on the district's website. For those of you who, in the public, who have not seen the order yet, it is posted there under the TEA Update for Austin ISD, so you can find that information there. But before we dive too far into the agreed order, the proposed agreed order, I'd like for Dr. Robinett to take a minute and give us some highlights about where we are now. For those who are not aware, there has been a lot of work in the district, largely by Dr. Robinett's department. And so if you want to share that information now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Trustees, interim Superintendent Segura, and Community. Drew Robinett, Assistant Superintendent for Special Education. This evening, I'm going to be working with the team in walking us through the correspondence in the proposed order from the administration side primarily. But prior to doing that, I'd like to situate the report and the TEA actions within the context of the progress and the planning and implementation that have been underway for our district and that we have reported both to the agency and to the public as part of ongoing efforts to improve special education services for our students. In our monitoring meetings with the agency, and as a result of progressing important initiatives with this Board and superintendent, particularly, or in our superintendent particularly since January, and in support of these efforts, we have seen a substantial, we've seen some substantial decrease in our number of pending evaluations for students. It was reported, and it continues to progress, just this past week as 35%, but it's over 40% since January of 2023. We've tested about 80% more students[1646.61] We've tested about eighty percent more students the prior, from the prior summer this summer in terms of a multitude of evaluation sites that were held across our city in partnership with contracted and now some permanent personnel that we have in place and the results of a team coordinating that effort. As you all know, with the investment of the systemic changes and resources overall for our district to continue on a path of that level of progress, we have more than tripled, tripled our number of school psychologists and diagnosticians. You created a substantial increase in the compensation for those individuals and likewise ensured that we had the open and allocated positions budgeted for us to be able to fulfill not just a current or a pending challenge, but ensure that we could sustain that over time with tremendous progression. Our staff in the spring, you all probably recall that the Stetson Report had been delivered to our school district just a little over a year ago, and so there were several components around priorities we'd be addressing as a district, and so staff at every school completed step by step, I'm sorry, staff from every school completed step by step for inclusive training with that group and likewise had technical assistance support, and that's one of many layered pieces of training that we likewise continued with development over this summer and are continuing to grow with implementation overall. Furthermore, as we've continued to progress with evaluations, we know that we have additional student needs and need to reach and provide those services for qualifying students, and so you and the budget added fifty special education staff members to accommodate the influx of students needing services once we started clearing and making sure that those were provided through the evaluation process for identified children. And then likewise, as President Singh mentioned in her recent conference, press conference, and in other pieces, all of this is not only putting into place sort of thinking about the desires of the district to be more and more not only in compliant, but be more reflective of your desired outcomes of our services and support for students, which we likewise share and are working towards. You've contributed and built into the budget an increase of over thirty-point-two million dollars for the district investment in special education, not only for these particular areas, but investments in stipends for teachers, making sure we could work to provide staffing and other resources to classroom. These actions don't work in isolation from our department. They really require systemic recognition, investment, and collaboration of things that need, are needed to be put into place to achieve overall outcomes for students. And although we'll report on some of the findings today, we understand when we share any data, including progress, our work is not done. We are continually working towards being in better service of over eleven thousand students with disabilities and their families. Next slide. So let me orient you, since this new board and interim superintendent came on, we have a timeframe to sort of compare from January of this year to now, from January of the prior year to now of two thousand and twenty-two, and I'd like to orient you to a comparison of evaluation progress for both the spring and the summer. And so on average, you can see a substantial increase in the number of evaluations completed per month, this, all the while with this, this investment that had been made into contractors and a very small but mighty team of evaluators that we've been able, as I mentioned before, to more than triple going into this next year or into this year as well. So you'll see some substantial increases. The darker or blue line is what it's reflecting on the screen there, obviously shows that we have about an average of four hundred, five hundred and thirty-nine per month for evaluation progress from that period of time, apples to apples, if you will, for two thousand and twenty-three relative to three hundred and fifty for the year prior at that time. There are a myriad of factors that contribute to this. Of course, there are people in place, there are resources in place, but there are also, there are data systems and ways to better track and be more strategic with our decisions to see our progress over time. When something is insurmountable related to a backlog, one of the things that the agency had been working with us is how do you really calibrate and structure a system to show and track adequate progress? But when you don't have those pieces entirely in place, it's very hard to think strategically. It becomes very overwhelming, and there's a desire, there's heart, but you need to have systemic pieces in place. And so there were a number of systemic pieces in place through the progress, planning and the initiative planning with interim superintendent Segura, with the investment with data analytics into our team to be able to track that over time, and then with people who are very skilled in thinking about how can we pivot and use those pieces of information around real students, real lives, real families, and turn that into better results for them for the first phase and then our desire for later phases throughout their journey with us here in Austin ISD. The final trend line that I'll share before we go through the pieces of the proposed agreed order is something that has been a question for the public. So you're making tremendous progress, and it is a system that's dynamic. There are inflows and there are oncoming, incoming pending evaluation requests, but I'd like to orient you, the total pending is, total pending evaluations, in other words, at that moment in time in August, I think around the twenty-fifth is the data pull, that we had total pending the trend line. At the time that we were reporting in January, some of that in executive session, we had three, the blue line, three thousand and eighty-five pending evaluations. That has decreased to this point in time to seventeen hundred and fifty-eight. What many folks ask is, well, but are all of them backlogged? Are they out of timeline? We are working on multiple levels, levers simultaneously to make progress for students who have been waiting, as well as students who have recently had some, some, some concerns or questions about suspected disability that we need to fulfill the required state and federal timelines in and around. So all of those pieces are working together. As of August twenty-fifth, when these data were pulled, you'll see that there is the total pending seventeen hundred and fifty-eight, four hundred and eighty-eight of those were past due, and that includes reevaluations and initial evaluations at that point in time. So there's a trend that is, I hope graphically shows, but to us, it's, those are lives, a trend in the right direction, and we don't take any of this lightly, not only in meeting evaluation needs, but then meeting the systemic changes that need to be underway for our students. I'll turn it over to our team, who will take you through the agreed order and the aspects related to that from a legal standpoint.
Before we get there, Dr. Robinett, can I get you just to highlight for everyone, though, the timeline that you have here, January to August, because I think it may be important for everyone to keep in mind, that is comparing January to August, the fall semester, we don't know what these numbers may ebb and flow slightly. So just to give you a heads up, we could see some changes in numbers as we move forward. Just wanted to highlight that. Is there anything further, or you're good with it?
No, thank you for bringing that up, but we had discussed that because that we, we do obviously anticipate, as in any system, there will be an inflow of new requests that we want to be addressing, not only with an increase in our evaluation staff, but realizing we likewise need to close the seventeen fifty-eight that we're in, in our queue to date. So that's part of the progress that we'll be reporting over time in the future, but you may see some fluctuation for that as we move into the fall, as we continue to work to be more and more compliant. Thank you.
Thank you. So before I get to the proposed order, one more thing I want to just highlight for everyone's benefit for, so that we're all playing from the same deck here, is looking at the intervention levels. Monitoring, monitor, a monitor from TEA is someone that's going to make recommendations and report back to TEA. That's what I reported to you back in the spring. Conservators and a management team, that is what was recommended in the Special Investigative Unit's final report, and that's issued a directive to staff, superintendent, or the board. Management teams, and as I mentioned earlier, that is multiple conservators, as then called a management team, are usually focused on a specific area, and in this case, it would be special education, particularly the evaluation backlog, among other things. And then level that I did not speak about previously is the Board of Managers, and so I wanted to highlight that for you as well. That is something to look at potentially down the road. If there is a conservator put in place, and it's in place for two consecutive years, TEA has the ability then to replace your superintendent, to assume the role of the Board of Trustees. This is what you often hear in the media as a takeover. So I don't want to alarm, but I want to bring it to your attention so you kind of know where we are with those timelines as we look at this proposed agreed order. And with that, finally, I will speak to that in the proposed agreed order, the Commissioner is recommending a placement of one or more TEA-appointed monitors. Other requirements, so again, let me backtrack just slightly there. That is what is, someone who is coming in to make recommendations and report back to TEA, we are not at that level, too, if you will, of a conservator. So that would be good news within this. Requirements for the board, which Ms. Bedio has been kind enough to be here this evening to share some more detailed information from you from the governance side. As you heard from comments, there are some concerns that we want to make sure and speak to on those. Requirements for the administration, failure to comply with the requirements, the state may appoint at that point a conservator or a management team, and so it would then increase the oversight and the intervention level, if you will, if the requirements are not met. And then last point highlight is that it requires the district to waive its right to appeal, and so we'll talk in more detail what that means. So we're going to begin with those key points regarding the board requirements. Ms. Bedio?
Hi, good evening, trustees, Superintendent Segura. I am going to talk a little bit about the governance components of the proposed agreed order. As you heard from Dr. Robinett, and as you'll hear more, there is a substantial amount of content related to the work the district needs to do around special education, but there are a couple of pieces that relate specifically to the way the board and superintendent operate together as a leadership team. And so those specifically are, in brief, first, the use of the Lone Star Governance Training Model, and that is something that is developed by TEA, and we'll talk about it a little bit more on the next slide, but there are requirements around not only the use of that, the hiring of a coach to support your work in that, but also specific goals they want you to meet within that context, one of which is to achieve a MEATs focus score. We'll talk about that as well, but if you think about it in terms of the STAR test, it's a bit like that. They've established criteria by which to measure your governance work, the highest, of course, is masters, and they're looking for a MEATs focus score for this board. The second component we heard a little bit from people in public comment is a requirement to devote fifty percent of meeting time to student outcomes. That is actually a master's level of achievement there, but it is a specific requirement to not only track your meeting time, but to limit your use of anything on, anything not related to student outcomes to fifty percent of your meeting time. It also, Lone Star Governance also involves creation of new student outcome goals or student outcome goals, period, and so you see here in parentheses, scorecard, this is, this is work this board already does, but it will require some specific work in that area. Lastly, there are also a number of policy revisions, which we'll go into over the next several slides, but not in a huge amount of boring detail, but there are some policy revisions that this board is going to be required to make by virtue of entering into this proposed agreed order by the end of the calendar year this year. Okay, so Lone Star Governance, and for anybody at home who's interested in learning more about it, you can very easily search it up on Google, just Google Texas Education Agency Lone Star Governance. If you're on the TEA webpage, you can search it there. There's a lot of information there. The way they describe it is a research-based continuous improvement model for governance. So that's the way your board and superintendent work together to run the school district with a focus, an intense focus on, as they put it, one objective, which is improving student outcomes, hence the interest in limiting your meeting time to, you know, fifty percent on student outcomes. The idea is you would work with a coach. There are five areas which you see here. That's your vision and goals, your systems and processes, your progress and accountability, advocacy and engagement, and synergy and teamwork. So in each of these areas, they have established ways to measure your work and ways to grade you. And so again, as we saw in the last slide, they're looking for you to achieve a MEATs focus score overall within the framework of this agreement. So it's, it is something that I know this board has already, you all probably are more expert in this area than I am, having already undergone a two-day Lone Star Governance workshop, but it is, it is very much a specific emphasis on how the board works with the superintendent, how you use your time, how you devote your resources, and what specifically you do in your role as trustees. So it's a very in-depth, it's a very in-depth program. Okay, board policy revisions. There are several, so we'll try to go through them relatively quickly, and I'll just try to give you some context for what these mean. So the first is to adopt board operating, operating procedures and to incorporate those into your BE local policy. This is an existing policy. Presumably, you'd be working with your Lone Star Governance coach to establish board operating procedures. Board operating procedures generally are not found in policy. They are just kind of the mechanics, almost like a regulation, like you would see in other forms of policy, of the way the board works, just kind of the brass tacks of the daily work of the board. They're looking for you to lay those out in your BE local. They also want you to revise DC local, which is your hiring policy. It sets out the authority of the board to hire staff. As you know, as a, as a board, you currently hire the superintendent, and you have authority beyond that. What this revision would, would have you do is limit your authority, separate from what you currently have. So you would be limiting the authority to hire or to approve the contracts of staff. It would also ask you to revise your CH local policy, which is a purchasing policy for specific contracts related to special education, and to the point that the board would only approve contracts, three years or longer, the amount of the contract exceeding five hundred thousand dollars, and to remove the current requirements to inform the board of contract renewals. So this is giving your administration an ability to make expenditures that they currently don't have the authority to do without board approval in the area of special education. Next slide would be to revise BP local, which deals with administrative regulations. Again, administrative regulations do not have the effect of policy. They're how your administration runs a business, or the way they give shape to the policies that you adopt as a board. The board currently does not have the authority, and boards generally don't have the authority to approve regulations because they're supposed to be a little more functional. They're for the administration to run the day-to-day work of the school district, but your current BP local policy does provide that the board can review them, meaning like review them as a board, and they would like you to change that so that they are not subject to board review, approval, or publication in the board policy manual, which is a pretty big change. Number five, they would like you to revise DFBB local, which for your contract staff is the policy by which their contracts can be non-renewed. DFBB local currently has a pretty long list of bases upon which an employment contract could be non-renewed, and this would just add another reason, which is failure to comply with special education requirements. So it'd add that. Number six, they would like you to revise DGB local, which not every school district has. This is the policy that relates to your consultation agreements. Austin ISD is unique for the use of consultation agreements and the extensive work that you do with groups like at Austin, and what they would like you to do is modify your DGB local policy such that consultation shall not be required related to special education issues unless required by law. So that's what it has to say about that. They would also like you to revise your DGBA local. That is a grievance, that is your employee grievance policy, and they would like it to reflect best practices regarding the role of management versus the governing body in order to ensure administrative progress in special education. So the theme that you're probably picking up with each of these policy changes is that ostensibly they are to help you or to help your administration and you as a board work together to make things more efficient in special education, to remove barriers. Lastly, they want to revise DN, DNA, and DNB local. These are policies around evaluations. DN is just evaluations generally. DNA is teacher appraisals, and DNB is campus administrator appraisals. So what they want you to do here is to require special education criteria relevant to employee job responsibilities be added. So those, in a nutshell, are the policy changes they would like you to make by, again, the end of this calendar year. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Robinett to talk a little bit more about the requirements for the administration. So I'll try to orient the, the key points regarding the requirements for administration, but I do want to bring into context that we have three priority pillars and three pieces that are very much connected to what you have seen, what the public has seen, and what was presented to the agency with our initiative around shared vision inclusive and inclusion inclusive practices, a second priority around high-quality instruction and improving that for students, and the third area around evaluations and compliance. I say that because there is a component of that, that is, that you'll notice those components situated into these priority areas that are noted as well. It doesn't prevent us from sustaining the momentum in those areas while likewise working together on a plan, should that be approved or sent forth by this board, related to this order, related to these priority areas. Okay? So the first priority area, I'm going to try to cover high points and in brief, which is a challenge for me. I do like my details, so I'm happy to have conversations thereafter with anyone who would like to, but priority one is around satisfying open corrective actions. Priority two, implementing practices to address systemic special education compliance, which really hones in also on some of those instructional practices, including the multi-tiered systems of support, response to intervention, as well as a substantial amount of training and development in and around those areas. Priority three is around improving data management and reporting systems so that the accurate reporting that we've been able to more situate for tracking and completing evaluations, that that be done around any and all of the aspects that are appropriate and as outlined by the agency for our reporting systems. And the final one is around establishing parent outreach as defined in the particular proposed agreed order, certainly as, as, as a minimum here. So I'm going to take you through each of these just at a high level. So satisfying open corrective action plans, just for the point, as a point of context, a corrective action plan, if there is a complaint or an issue or concern that is brought to the agency or that is brought forth, then that is looked into, and if there is a need for a remedy or correction, a corrective action plan is
And if there is a need for a remedy or correction, a corrective action plan is issued. And so they have components where they're asking us to satisfy open corrective action plans within the confines of what they've outlined here. The first one, I know that Ms. Kaminsky mentioned that we had come on April 3rd. The first one, 202116617, is the original corrective action plan that actually came into place on that timeline of TEA actions in October of 2020, well before almost all of, you know, our board was really in place at that point in time. And that corrective action was defined by the agency. There's different levels as systemic by December of 2020. So they are looking at closing that particular corrective action plan out with certain requirements as it was really related to any evaluations up until that time, but they likewise expanded that to say completed evaluations for anything prior to the 2022-23 school year being done by this October. At that time, you can see the data there. We are well on our way for progress to be able to fulfill that expected timeline, although I know that's not the nature of this explanation here, but I just want to provide that as a point of context. And then that doesn't mean, as I mentioned, that we stop levers for what's occurring for this year and in prior years. And so we'll be looking at any, the next component is to be able to look at any outstanding evaluations from the prior year while we're continuing to make progress on this year. And those from the fall semester, which they consider June 30th through December, would need to be completed by October 31st. And then any of those from the spring up until that June 30th deadline would need to be completed by December 31st. So those are the, the general parameters of those timelines. There were some corrective actions that they cited by number. Corrective actions have a number associated with them, and they expect us to fulfill the timeline submissions and corrections. And any, anything that we submit related to that is evaluated by the agency to determine if it is accepted or not in terms of those corrections. And then finally, over time, this is a, not a short-term fix. This is to have sustained improvement. There's an expectation that we address state performance plan indicator, school age evaluations, which is SPP 11, state performance plan 11, and that we look at something that's referred to as a federally required element. Those elements are a part of the state performance plan, not to get into the weeds and, weeds and around that, but that there, districts across the state have those federally requirements, required elements applied. And you want to be, you'll see a two, a PL, performance level one, and a performance level zero. A performance level two is 80 or 85% or above in compliance, and then 90 and then 95% above. And they want us to make sure we step in the correct direction even with these, this year, and it would be reported the following October. So that would be the explanation of, oop, I'm clicking this one, but not that one, of the corrective action plans. Priority two is around systemic addressing, practices for addressing systemic special education compliance. They really delineate what that should look like in their particular proposed agreed order. Those are recommended pieces. We see that we can layer a number of those into what we have been doing underway and likewise make sure that we fulfill the expectations therein in, in the order. Again, if, if approved. So that starts with a third-party audit, and RFP is already underway. From that audit, combined with the Stetson report, there is a requirement that we have a strategic plan for special education that reflects the findings of those things, can build on some actions we had underway and see where we have deficits or gaps that we haven't addressed and need to fortify in that system and in that strategic plan. There will be, at the end of the next year, the state of special education public reporting to the board around how we're doing related to that, what is the plan, progress over time. And then there's a pretty extensive defined professional learning plan. They've outlined some of the elements that are included there, that there would be baseline or some additional structured training that we would build upon, training and development for multiple levels, not only special education teachers, but all general education educators, all instructional staff, for principals and assistant principals as well in the structures that, at least that they've defined and we could augment. I wanted to bring to, as a point of context, some of the timelines are a little tight, but in their agreed order, when it comes to the called-out components for the training and development, there is a statement that says that in the event that we have existing materials that do, or new materials developed that do satisfy those requirements that, that the agency deems appropriate for approval, then we would be able to supplement, augment, or perhaps adjust some of those to make sure that it's reflective of that. So heavy in terms of training and development, including multi-tiered systems of supports and building in strong tiered instruction for all of our students. By next spring, we'll have a manual developed based on that training around multi-tiered system supports, the tier modules that are done through the Texas Education Agency, and likewise the Meadow Center out of the University of Texas. And there will be some extensive professional learning around that. This training year is sort of, as they view it, foundational to then begin that implementation the following year of the multi-tiered system of support program or monitoring of how's it working? You've had training and development, how are we seeing implementation? We know that professional learning is very strong as a strong predictor of student outcomes, but when coupled with coaching development and support. And then all of those processes will be related to us having monitoring protocols in place. The final two are around priority three is around accurate data systems. I really talked more about that even in the overview that was provided, and detailed monthly reporting. So the first component, by next August, we have some of those, but that meet the specific requirements as the agency outlines them, to be able to pull that reporting for them and provide that. And of course, for our own monitoring would be by next August. And then likewise, outside of evaluations around referrals, completions, disability types, least restrictive environment, IEP minutes, and there are myriad of other components that you could take a look at, would need to be completed and implemented by next October. So making sure that the flow-through of those systems all works together. Last but not least, on the final one, on priority four, it's around a parent outreach campaign. And so part of our, part of our current recovery initiative has a number of layered pieces that were to be put into place for connection with increasing resources and access with our website and materials. They really codify and spell that out, a bit more related to their own compliance expectations, if you will, and pieces that they would like to see us provide as evidence. So central communication for parents around child find, certainly required through the law, but that it is very prevalent and prominent for folks to be able to find not only the processes, but access to their rights. Parent-facing materials for federal and state requirements, including evaluations, procedural safeguards, those tools that are availed, availed to families, as well as website updates and ongoing communication with videos, outreach materials, and information, et cetera. Some of that will build upon existing, our parent empower hours or other pieces, as well as some pieces more specifically delineated by the agency. And then the final component is around a parent advisory group and the establishment of that, and what that should look like is sort of laid out here with at least 15 members who are parents of students here, of students with disabilities receiving services here in our school district. So with that, I will turn it back over and appreciate your time.
Sure. This last slide here is about the right to appeal. So for just a second, I'll try to reorient us to what actually lies in front of the district and the community, and that is that, again, you're being asked to consider a proposed agreed order. And that what we've just been talking about are the terms that you're being asked to agree to. If you, so the option, of course, is for the board to do that, to by vote, no later than September 29th of this month, to vote to approve this. If the board does not do that, we don't know exactly what will transpire. We know there are going to be sanctions, and we know that in March, when TEA issued its report, the proposed sanction was to install a conservator or a management team, which is essentially more than one conservator. So it's, it's likely that we'd be looking back at doing that again. At that point, there may be an ability to appeal that decision to SOA, which is the State Office for Administrative Hearings. Again, and I think as Pam pointed out, one of the provisions of this agreement is that the board waives any right, if, if it enters into this agreement, you would be waiving any right to appeal, you know, a SOA appeal, for example, any future sanctions. So one of the components of this is that if you don't meet these targets, if you don't satisfy these requirements as set forth in the agreement with TEA, they reserve the right to change course and go ahead and install a conservator. They could do that. So if you agree to this, you're agreeing to be held accountable to that possible sanction with no ability to appeal it. So that's an important note as well. It adds a little bit of, of gravity to the decision that you are giving us information about, and we're giving the public information about. So we hope that this has been helpful to everyone to understand what exactly this entails. It is a great deal of work for, for your administration and some work for the board as well. So with that, I think we're prepared to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much for that presentation. A lot of good information there for us to consider. Trustees, do you all have any questions? Okay, Trustee Foster.
Not that I'd like to go first. Thank you all for, well, I guess thanks to the administration and our president and our leadership for making the decision to convene a meeting tonight so that we can really get some of this stuff out in terms of our understandings, but also sharing it with the public. There's been so many questions and so many opinions floating out and accuracies and inaccuracies that were born of nothing but goodwill, but questions. So I'm appreciative of this evening, even though it's yet another Thursday evening. And thank you, Pam, for being here and coming in in person. So it strikes me, as, as I hear this and as I learn about this, and as not an attorney, I, I am guided through, that on the administrative side, the order would allow for a lot of really good work to continue. And I guess I'd ask our assistant superintendent over Special Ed, if that's indeed the case, that this order, we've done so much since January. We have a new interim superintendent who's come in, a systems thinker. We've had a collaboration of the board and worked together to allocate additional resources at times and to, to make adjustments where necessary, and some really good things have happened. It feels like this order is consistent with the special education work that you have been engaging so far. So just as a quick question, is that a yes, or am I on the right path if I say that?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Foster. There, there are substantial parallels to our special education recovery initiative and the work that's been underway. What it does do is it spells out some timelines and some, some defined timelines for progression that, some of which are, I don't know if they're more accelerated, but they're accelerated in the way they want those things delivered, but there are parallels. I'm not trying to convince you of one thing or another in terms of any decision that this board would, would render. But yes, that, that, there, there are echoes of that throughout our plan, and then it's more substantiated here. If they have a component that's noted for training and development, it does not preclude us or prevent us from substantially building in other layers of our, our momentum that has been underway to make sure that we continue to do that and layer it in better, so.
That's helpful. And of course, a sort of, anytime anyone says, you know, we're from the government and we're here to help, you want to apply some scrutiny to that, right? Then that applies to us, it applies just generally. And so it's exciting to hear that there is some alignments. That sounds like a good thing, and there might not be 100% agreement on everything, but yet there's capacity to work together. So I, I'm appreciative of that. And then at the same time, as I'm seeking to understand the, the proposal, I, I hear a lot about student outcomes and attention to student outcomes. And so I guess I would ask our attorneys, are considerations of student mental health, does that count towards conversation about student outcomes?
Just in looking at the rubric created by TEA for Lone Star Governance, it appears that the way they, and, and they do have some, some metrics around how you consider student outcomes. For the most part, we're talking about setting your student outcome goals, your test scores. Those kinds of things are what they consider to be student outcome goals. I do think some of the more, the finer points of how you work within the Lone Star Governance framework might be, might be worked out between you and your Lone Star Governance coach, if that makes any sense. I mean, mental health, certainly, you know, I don't think any, anybody probably has a question that that is a huge student outcome, is how, how they're faring mentally and with the social and emotional components of their education and their experience at Austin ISD. I'm not sure that fits within the rubric of Lone Star Governance, but probably that answer would have to be arrived at between the board superintendent and Lone Star Governance coach.
Interesting. So likewise, if we want to have conversations about student and staff safety, would those be allowed under our conversations of student outcomes?
I don't know that those would be treated as student outcomes, but they may not count against you for purposes of Lone Star Governance. There are certain things they carve out from, it's basically, they define it as, you know, you're focusing on student outcome goals or you're focusing on adult problems, right? But there are some things that don't fall into either of those buckets, and those are things like, you know, public comment. You know, you're required to hear a public comment. They don't count those minutes against you. So to the extent that you're required to have those conversations, those are not going to count against you in terms of the meeting minutes that are devoted to them.
To the extent that we are required by a specific statute to talk about them, then we can. But if it's not fit within a specific.
Specific statute? Again, I would say, in general, I think the student outcome goals or the, you know, devoting 50% of meeting time means devoting 50% of meeting time to how students are performing.
On a test.
Right. Again, I think the subtleties that might exist within that concept of student outcomes probably will need to be, will have to be worked out between this board and your Lone Star Governance coach. I can't, I, I would love to tell you definitively yes or no, but I just don't know that.
If we were to engage as part of our practices as educators, as members of a community, that we wanted to say celebrate students or celebrate staff, and we wanted to celebrate students who achieved in forensic debate at the state level or who achieved in terms of music or who won a football championship, would those things count as student outcome time, or would that not count?
I was gonna say that would count. I, I would just reiterate what Ms. Bedias is saying is that so many of those items that you need to talk about statutorily are required to talk about, special recognitions that need to happen, those are things that it would be important for the board to work with the Lone Star Governance coach to determine how those would lay out. When we look at Lone Star Governance language, student outcomes is looking specifically to performance. And so those things may not count.
Narrowly defined to test scores.
Primarily, yes.
So 50% of our time focused on test scores. Understood?
Can I say one quick thing? So I'm just reading page five of the actual agreed order, and they do say, I'll just read it, says, "Beginning immediately." So it would have to happen like right when we start this, not till the end of the year, but like September 20, 30th, I guess. "The board must dedicate 50% of its time during board meetings to student outcomes." But they also say, "Which must include progress monitoring related to special education compliance," which is not a test score, but that is something that we have adopted recently onto our scorecards. That would, that would count. And student outcomes for students with special needs, which also currently is on our scorecard. But I just, just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that that 50% would include progress monitoring related to special outcomes, so the evaluation backlog tracking would be part of it. The other thing I wanted to ask is, when people think about board meetings, typically they think about this, right? But there, we also have committees. So could you explain how that fits into the calculation?
Sure. Again, probably not as expert in Lone Star Governance as y'all are, but. Sure. Again, probably not as expert in Lone Star Governance as you all are, but my understanding and based on the language included in the proposed agreed order, meeting time means all meetings. That means, and specifically in the proposed agreed order, it includes closed session meetings. So, meetings of the board that include committee meetings that are, I believe there's a carve out for required committee meetings, like your safety and security meetings, but we're talking about all meeting time. So, there's a substantial amount of work that goes on in committees as well. And so that would be, that would be included, is my understanding.
Didn't mean to hijack your comments. Go ahead.
No, that was, that took away a segment that I was probably delivering and too long winded away. But I had questions about what are the meetings and the potential realization that this is a meeting, an information session is a meeting, a voting meeting is a meeting, but then the policy committee meeting is a meeting. And there are many meetings that happen that advance the work of the district, that ensure the safety of our kids, sometimes narrowly in a safety and security committee meeting, but sometimes in other areas. There's a lot around our fiscal responsibility, our fiduciary duties. And so I guess I have some wonderings and concerns. We're one of the largest landholders in central Texas with, you know, millions, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of land that has to be, we have to be careful stewards. And so I'm just a little, I'm a little confused, concerned around our capacity to live into our responsibilities to serve students when service to students goes beyond, and it certainly includes, how did you do on a test? But it goes well beyond how you did on a narrow test. So I just have some questions that I'm wrestling with. I do want to ask really quickly of the administration. There was a line in there, an item around a $500,000 threshold where below $500,000 in the special education area, we would not, the board would not have approval. And upon renewal, the board would not be informed. So as a simple question, do we have many such contracts?
Trustee Foster, thank you for the question. As far as scale goes, there aren't that many that fall within the 100 to 500. As you can imagine, given the scale of this organization and the magnitude that we're operating and given the budget amounts, these are all, in most cases, much larger than $500,000. So there aren't many. I can't even really think of any that I've, we've moved through a couple here and there. But generally speaking, they're much larger contracts. And again, this doesn't preclude us from updating the board, just to be clear. We still have that opportunity to communicate and have that conversation.
So, exactly, the follow-up, like that. The follow-up question was, in terms of your philosophy of practice and the administration's philosophy of practice as leaders, would it be something that you would be interested in sharing if you were interested in signing a $650,000 contract?
So, generally speaking, I think, as you know, and hopefully our community is beginning to know about being as I like to operate and as incredible transparency as possible, much transparency as possible. So, yeah, we'll continue to update, you know, and provide updates to the board, just like we do with everything else in the organization. Again, you know, I continue to want to support that line of communication with the board and would, you know, be supportive of doing that.
So, the last thing, and then President Singh, I will, I will stand down. But I really just want to learn here tonight. In the case of our 1882 partnerships, we partnered with a group from a list that was a sort of state-approved list and sort of went from there. And it's, you know, it's what you would call a constrained choice. So, someone would say, "Well, you got to choose. Well, you got to choose from a list that was approved, that came from outside of us." What is the role of the state in determining who we contract with?
The role of the state? I guess specifically to special education services or just, you know, vendors or partners in general?
As it pertains to this proposed work agreement. So what, yeah?
So typically, our approach would be, we as an organization would identify a need that would be led by the department. The department would develop a scope of work. They would work with our procurement division and finance to ensure that the funds are available. We would go through procurement process and evaluation matrix comprised of A I S D staff, our procurement department kind of ushering the process along. And at that point, staff would make a recommendation based on the valuation rubric and that would go forward, you know, through a process. But there isn't intervention of sorts regarding, like the vendors on the list, generally speaking. But yeah, that's the approach that we take and that's the one we would continue to take.
So we would not likely, be likely to be faced with any formal or informal constrained choices? Or you all would not, when it came to contracting?
I can't envision any. One thing I would say is, there are times, and again, this is across all types of contracts, where there are buy boards or there are kind of procurement opportunities and methodologies that apply statewide. And what it allows administrations and boards to do is to move through a procurement process more efficiently. But that's true of many different types of purchases. Buses, for instance, are one of those things that fall in that category. So, you know, there are lots of those out there and we have them across pretty much every division within A I S D and every district has those. So it's not that there, the state or anybody is identifying who, it's just that there is a pre-approved list out there. And again, what we've observed is that it's generally kind of everybody under the sun that qualifies. Again, all of that is dependent on the needs identified by the team and that evaluation is still done by A I S D and our team.
I have, what did?
One area that has been helpful to us is, as you know, for evaluations and speech therapy supports, et cetera, we needed to contract a substantial number of folks. So, having folks that are either already on the list that you all approved several years back for multi-year, but likewise building off of those buy boards and other connections, it allows us to address that more efficiently and bring on other contractors to fulfill a need. That's an example.
I have concerns, worries. $500,000 sounds like a lot of money to me. I don't know how it hits other people. And, you know, we as a board, there is latitude below a threshold. I believe our threshold is what, 100,000? And then, you know, above 100,000, things typically come to the board for approval. And in my experience on the board, there are almost always consent items. They appear in an information session and we have an opportunity to ask questions of them. Sometimes, some of the trustees who actually have very specific expertise in different areas will ask them questions. Sometimes things get sharpened a little bit. Sometimes they get tweaked. But typically, I don't know the numbers, nine times out of 10, 99 times out of 100, by the time it gets to our voting meeting, they just come and go on consent without any, you know, challenge or problem. So it feels to me like this is an area where we are functioning well. And as someone who's not an attorney but who reads words like fiduciary responsibility, I get scared at the notion that we are accountable for being good fiscal stewards of a $2.1 billion budget and yet we are asked to not weigh in or not have a say or in some cases not review contracts that are absolutely substantial and consequential and important. And this is historically, from Nicole Conley before on, this is a really strong organization from a fiscal standpoint. I feel like we work well together. And I'm a little worried about actually ironically, the destabilization of our fiscal stewardship through the introduction of new items in areas where we appear already strong. So that was an unsolicited comment and I semi-apologize for that. But I'll stop there. I have many more wonderings, but I think I'm going to continue to learn as the other trustees raise their questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Foster. Trustee Lugo.
So I have a question. I'm not sure which of you, or maybe Superintendent Segura, may be able to answer this. But in thinking about the 50% target, are there any school districts of any size that meet that threshold? Because as you said, if we hit 50%, then that's a master's focus. So just wondering who's mastering that?
I don't know who's mastering it. If anyone, I will tell you that in my research on Lone Star Governance, I did discover that on the T E A website, there is a Lone Star Governance leaderboard. So you might check there. I don't know if any of those school districts is hitting that 50%. But, yeah, that's it. I don't know.
Trustee Administration, now.
No, Trustee Lugo, I don't know the percentages of other boards. I just don't.
I thought I heard that maybe one or two schools, school districts, sorry, one or two school districts hit that master's focus. And I want to say, the school population, and I'm looking at Trustee Hunter, do you remember what that school population was for those districts by chance?
I do not have it, again, in my memory right now. But just reviewing, it was somewhere around, I think 2,000 was one, 450 was another. So I don't have the numbers. It's on the T E A website. It's very prominently displayed.
On that leaderboard.
On that board, yes.
Yeah. But sounds like definitely nowhere near the tens of thousands of students that come through Austin ISD.
Not in my brief look. I didn't see that. It could be there. I didn't do an exhaustive research over years. I think I looked at like 2017 to date. And so, yeah, that's, but again, it's there on the site. You can see it and kind of go through. And then, Texas Tribune has like what the school looks like and you can kind of do some work from there.
So that's interesting. And then the other piece, and I think this was mentioned, but for folks who may not be reading the proposed order, who would select, is there, does it appear to be that any feedback or input from the board or the administration would be welcomed in selecting who the monitor is? And the reason I ask that is sometimes within the community, right, as Trustee Foster mentioned, there's misinformation or misunderstanding. And so I think some folks may just need a little clarification around that piece.
From what I'm reading in the proposed agreed order, it is appointed by T E A.
Exactly. Thank you.
Trustee Boswell.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. My first couple are for the administration. And Trustee Foster touched on it a little bit. I just, you know, our primary goal with this obviously is to make sure that each and every one of our students are getting what they need, that we're meeting our legal obligations to them, making sure in doing that, that they're getting what they're entitled to under federal law and state law and, you know, the bottom line, getting what they need to be successful. So do you feel, I know you talked with Trustee Foster and said the plan is very, you know, aligned with the work you were doing with different details, different timelines, different targets, but very aligned. Do you think the plan as laid out in this agreement gets us to where we need to be for all of our students?
Transparently, Trustee Boswell, I think the plan is part of a foundational piece to get us in that direction, level-setting the organization, moving together with that momentum. But there are components that are in here, to be very honest with you, that are about compliance and meeting a standard that isn't necessarily indicative of the vision that you all have set for our district. That is what we have truly latched on to, the desired components around us being Austin's home for inclusive learning. And we've talked about this prior. And so there are pieces of that built in. I have communication back and forth, including today, with Dr. Stetson, like how do we build and not lose strong momentum that has been in place and make things in a way that makes sense, not I'm complying, but that I am actually trying to transform my instructional practice, my supports. Our system is embracing that overall. So would I, we are working in, there are alignment pieces that are called out here, but there would be absolutely more that would be a part of our expectation with our initiative through the point in time that it's been developed. And then with, as we're continuing to progress, as I've stated here before, additional components that we need to build in for our students over time. And we know that patience is something that we don't expect folks to have in and around that. We take that very seriously. And so it gets us, it's definitely arrows in that direction. I feel very much that the agency, when there was a response back there to, from this board and from this district back to the agency and to the commissioner, there were details about attaching our plans, saying what we had in place. That's why I believe there was review because of the echoes and the parallels. There are guardrails that are set that are more specific in terms of time and space and structures they want in place. But we are not held as a department to only fitting within those guardrails. Expanding and moving beyond is really our desire to become what we know our students deserve over time. I don't know if that truly answered your question, but...
That's helpful, Dr. Ryman. So just to clarify what I'm hearing, I'm hearing you say that the proposed order gets us to compliance in terms of addressing past problems, preventing future problems, sets some very specific metrics and goals, which we would expect with that, and that our goal is what's within the agreement, kind of compliance plus. Your goal as a department, you know, the administration's goal shared by the board and really informed by our community and its values and what we've heard from so many people for so long. Okay, that is very helpful to me. Thank you. And then my second question is, I know you mentioned a couple of the timelines being a little tight. I think, you know, you mentioned the urgency, right? It's every student needs what they need now. So, tight but workable, tight but you feel like you can meet it? Because I know on the, for the board's work and the administration's work, if we approve this and fail to meet it, the consequences are big. So I think the question I want to ask of us as trustees and you is kind of, is this doable?
So, and we have spent a lot of time building out, we didn't receive this prior to August 1st, when we have, you know, our calendar is set for the year, meeting our instructional minutes is set for the year, building out our professional learning structures and timelines based on the available days that we have. So we'll be meeting next week with our administrators. We meet with our principals next Wednesday to talk about how we would meet especially those like all teachers December 31st, all teachers, even if it might say a May 31st. If you look at just our general calendar, after January 8th, there aren't really professional learning days that are built into our calendar for elementary in particular due to conference days. So, we were trying to think strategically without there being additional cost burdens or additional tacking on for families and staff members who had not planned for that accordingly. How can we make this meaningful and build it into our structures that are existing? And we'll be working with our principals to be able to operationalize that. And then you'll see some of the work for implementation around the M T S S process, which, I mean, this is a, this is not a 400 or 1,200 or 2,000, I mean, this is a huge system to move. And so the timelines are ambitious but doable to really level-set baseline understanding and building that capacity. And then likewise, for follow-up years, we'll be building that in for other folks. And then moving to systemic implementation, which is part of one of our priority two, I believe, in our plan. But the collaboration components, nothing precludes us from doing those other collaborative components, but those baseline pieces will be, that plus can be included from the plan that's there. We are ready. We are willing. We are beyond able with the support of the system overall. One thing I have learned in many years here, but certainly since January, is when you have an entire system galvanized, you saw trend lines and that one A becomes everyone's business, that is really shared ownership and a vision. So regardless of the outcome here, that's something we can't relent on for our students. And we will help structure the ways. There might be some scrapes in figuring some things out. I have to acknowledge that. And having the adequate time to maybe do things exactly the way we would want to, might not be some of the latitude for as early as October, but we can build on with October days and forthcoming days thereafter into our system with our team members. So, it will require all of us.
Thank you. I appreciate. That's very helpful. And I think this... That's very helpful, and I think this administration has given us a real reason to believe, since we all came together as a team of 10, that big things are really possible, so.
And I want to give, so I think Dr. Robinett said August 1st, but it was September 1st. And so as far as the amount of time we've had to work through this, but one of the things I want to point out is, you know, we have been working through this.
I have not had it.
Yeah, I know you haven't, and that's what I wanted to just reinforce, is that you have, we haven't had it, but we have spent time working with teacher leading and learning, making sure we understood where the constraints would be, working through them, reorganizing different opportunities we have to give in front of principals and all of our staff. So it is, it is very doable. I'm very confident that we can accomplish this, and I do not think it keeps us from accomplishing everything else that we've already laid out. But like everything else, it's a challenge, and we've already set many of them, and we've accomplished them to date, so, you know.
Thank you both very much for that. I appreciate that. I think I have a couple of questions for our attorneys, and would love clarity. We've talked a little bit in some questions about other duties under the Texas Education Code, other things boards need to do. Some of them very specific, you need a hearing about your accountability on this date, you need a hearing about your tax rate on this date. Those are very specific, the safety and security reports that we're getting. So those, and then some other things that are duties of the board but aren't quite as time, you know, this thing happens into September, but things that we need to do to meet our obligations to our taxpayers. As trustee Foster said, we have a $2 billion budget, a $2.5 billion bond. So can you just share a little bit about what we need to fit into that 50% so we can really be thinking together?
Sure.
About what that requires and how it might be done?
Sure, and there are a couple of statutory provisions in the Education Code, Section 11.1511 and 11.15, I believe, and they talk about the powers and duties of the Board of Trustees, and they lay out pretty, in pretty broad terms, the authority and the responsibilities of a Board of Trustees, and there are things like adopting a budget, setting a tax rate, adopting board policies, and as we know, that's not quick work always. It is hiring and firing, and then, you know, when we talk about the board's authority to hire, we generally conceptualize it as they hire and fire the superintendent.
Bless you.
But truly, the authority to approve contracts is in the hands of the Board of Trustees, and to the extent that there are, as we talked about earlier, non-renewals and terminations, those kinds of things, those decisions have to be made by Boards of Trustees. Grievances have to be heard by Boards of Trustees. So there is a whole host of work that the board has to do, cannot delegate, that is, has to be considered, for sure.
Okay, thank you for that. That's helpful. I have a second question. Do you know if in these agreements, Lone Star Governance is a customary part of an agreement for a conservator or a monitor? I've been reading about other districts and see that popping up often.
Right, I think that it is becoming a customary component of them, yes. It's fairly typical.
Okay, thank you. And then two more questions, just from a legal perspective, requiring waiver of appeals. Just tell me kind of legally, the significance of that, the weight of that. I have a lot to agree, but I'm not a real lawyer, so I would love to hear from you guys kind of what the weight of that is.
Sure, and I'll let Pam speak to it too, but essentially what you're doing is they're asking you to agree to these terms, and if you agree to these terms, what it means is that you're agreeing to do all of these things, and you're agreeing that if you don't do them, and I'm vastly oversimplifying, but you're agreeing that if you don't do them, you are prepared to take the consequences, which TEA has not required itself to and is not required to, but could install a conservator or a management team. So that's, so when you are waiving your right to further appeals, you are waiving your right to challenge consequences that may or may not happen, and the reasons that they might happen. If you don't agree to this, you have potentially the ability to, well, depending on what the sanctions are imposed at that point, you would potentially have the ability to appeal the imposition of those sanctions. Again, depending on what they are, depends on the mechanism. But if you agree to these terms, they're just, you know, you've heard from Dr. Robinett, you've heard from Pam and me about just the extensive nature of the requirements that this imposes upon the district, and if you don't meet them, and in the discretion, I guess, of the monitor, because the monitor will report back to TEA, and then the commissioner, they can decide whether to escalate, and at that point, you will, you will have already agreed to accept that and not challenge it.
Thank you. That's helpful. And then Pam, do you have something?
No, I was gonna say, nothing further, I think she covered it. She had offered it for me to respond, but I'm like, I think you got it.
Thank you. And back to the possibility of a conservator, if we reject this, that may very well be the response. We had talked about the conservator having the ability to direct both the administration and the board. I know when we first got the letter and was doing some digging, you know, found that, for example, the conservator in Houston, when that was their situation, had directed them not to hire a superintendent at one point when they were conducting a search. Kind of how broad are those powers to direct?
I mean, they're broad. They, you know, a monitor is here to observe and report, a conservator is here to tell you what to do.
Okay.
And, you know, in theory, in the, with regard to special ed and decision-making, that would relate to that, but...
Okay, and I know in the letter that we got in March, it talked about special education and then said that special education, because it touches so many things, is not just Dr. Robinett's department, that it's a very broad, that they were looking at that more broadly than that. Is that a correct understanding?
I would say, yeah, that's a correct understanding. At the time, when we were looking at this in early April, after we received the March report, we were looking at it primarily from the lens of special education, but because that does touch so many areas, conservators could be appointed into other areas. Clearly, special education is the one area where we would anticipate that happening, but it would potentially be broader if a conservator is appointed.
Okay, thank you. And then one final question. Do we have a sense of, I see that there's a long list of tasks, both for the administration and the Board of Trustees, and I see a lot of different dates in the proposed agreement, the proposed order. Do we have a sense of a timeline? I mean, I know policies can't be changed for five years, are we looking at five years? But we need to get to meets as a board within two years, and then, you know, it's 25, 26 before PLO 0, but then lots of other things that are a sooner timeline. Do we have any sense of when we might get to a point where the manager would no longer be needed? Or is that not clear?
I think it's unclear at this point. I think the five years is the minimum that we would anticipate, but there are some things that would need to happen prior to that beginning, so it seems unclear at this point.
So you think the five years would be the minimum?
It's what it looks like as you read through this. We can talk about it, though, probably in more detail in executive session.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Hunter.
I'll just kind of pick up where trustee Boswell left off. So the five years commits us and all those who would be elected afterwards, because it's five years, no matter who sits here, right?
That's right. With regard to the policy revisions, there is language in the proposed agreed order to the effect that they couldn't revert back or be changed for a period of five years.
So like your children being born into debt also, going into debt is...
Got it. That's one way of talking about it, yeah.
Okay, I just want to get some clarification on a couple of things, and so I'm gonna work backwards, because that's how my mind works. So we're gonna start with the board policies. I mean, it's only the board policies, but I'm gonna start from number eight. So DN local, DNA local and DNB local is regards to special education and employee job responsibilities. That's added, correct?
Right, to the evaluation.
To the evaluation, okay, got it. DGBA local is regarding the role of management so that it progresses the work in special education, like those corrective actions and things like that, and staying, not only catching up, but continuing in good fashion.
Right, with regard to employee grievances.
Okay.
Right, so to the extent there's overlap.
Okay. DGB local is consultation is not required where, when it's related to special education, unless by law.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then DFBB is failure to comply with special education is reason for non-renewal of your employee contract.
Correct.
Okay, and then BP local, administrative regulations, again, related to special education.
Correct.
Okay. CH local, that's special education contracts with that, that the amount, that contract exceeds $500,000, right?
For three years.
For three years.
Right.
Okay, and DC local is everything.
Hiring. It's hiring.
It's hiring, but it's not just for special education, it's hiring everything.
That's right. That's correct.
So for people who don't read our policies, right now, the board can hire the superintendent, correct? Can dismiss a superintendent, and then what's the next level?
And then the next level, we would be looking at chiefs.
Chiefs.
And then the next level below that, I believe, is executive directors, and anybody who knows this better than I do, correct me if I'm wrong, assistant superintendent.
I'm helping the public, I know. All right.
That's true, I can, here.
So, go ahead.
So currently, right now, the contracts that come to the board for approval include the chiefs, in this case deputy superintendent, chiefs over any divisions, assistant superintendents, and then executive directors. That's where the current policy is.
Okay, and those are generally consent items?
Correct. I haven't participated in one where it wasn't.
I'm just talking about us. I'm not talking about people that came before.
Okay.
Just this board, this team of 10. And then in, since we've been together, has there ever been an issue on the consent where we've said, no, we don't want that guy, that lady's no good for us? Or have we trusted the judgment of our interim?
I have not experienced, y'all say no.
Okay.
That's probably not a good thing. No, that's a good thing. It's a good thing.
I don't know how to answer that any better.
No, just for practice, right? Sometimes with my own kids, I just say no. No, like, just kidding. Yes, but just get practice now. So I just really, as a team of 10, we have managed to, following your lead, put together a really, I love looking out at all these beautiful, multicolored, multi-gendered faces. That's really a good thing, and so I'm proud of that for us as a district, following our own advice of inclusiveness and diversity. And so my last bit is on BE local. It's just then codifying those practices. Is that correct?
That's right. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, any other questions or comments? Dr. Kaufman.
Just a couple. First of all, would this meeting count as a student outcome-focused meeting or as a required-by-law meeting?
That is tricky, because there are, time that you spend working on Lone Star Governance stuff doesn't count towards the time, so arguably, this would, I mean, I think it's, this would get into the like, let's have a good relationship with our coach scenario, but yeah, I think this would probably not count against you, but I could be wrong about that.
Okay. And the beginning here of, the beginning of the document that we're reviewing tonight indicates, on page two, wherein they acknowledged special education deficiency and governance shortcomings, and also acknowledged the benefits of TEA intervention, referring to the meeting with the Commissioner of Education. I was looking back at the AISD final report that was issued on March 31st. I don't see any findings in that report that extensively, you know, documented the deficiencies in our programming and our evaluations and our services for kids. I didn't see any documentation there of actual shortcomings in governance. Is, am I missing something, or was there anything documented to say that the challenges that we're facing are a result of governance?
I think your reading is accurate.
Okay, so that's a piece that's part of the proposed plan, but not part of the documented findings? Okay, thank you.
Trustees, any other questions? Okay, great. I don't really have a question, but I did want to go back to this lovely pending evaluations trend line, so we kind of end on a...
Go back four, six.
It was slide...
Page five?
There you go.
Yes, that one. Okay, so I really want to, so take a look, the black line, the past due, this is kind of the key, one of probably like the biggest point of how we are in this, how we find ourselves in this situation right now, is in January, well, this started a couple of years back, where we had much higher numbers, actually unknown numbers, of outstanding Mr. Segura was hired in December. This was, you know, the number one thing, you know, when the board learned of the TEA investigation, you know, just a few months prior to our hiring you, and we were like, okay, now that we know what's going on, we really want to make sure that, you know, we hire somebody who has the skills to ensure that our students are getting the services they need. That is the, I mean, and I really appreciate Dr. Robinett, what you said earlier about like, these are numbers, but these are individual students. Like, it makes me very upset to know, as a district, we had not served so many students and did nothing about it, and these kids did not get served, and that is not right. So I completely own that, acknowledge that as a district, and I just want to note that like, at least on this one issue, the past due evaluations, we went from almost 1,800 past due evaluations in January, and a staff of about 20 evaluators, to 488 overdue evaluations and a staff of about 72, 74 evaluators. That does not happen overnight, you know, and that, I just want to commend our staff for the excellent work. And the one thing we heard from our community when we were looking for a superintendent is we need to stabilize this organization, and this was a huge piece of the instability. It was, special education was not right. And just so, I want to thank you for that work and thank the board for really forcing ourselves to prioritize this. It's so easy to spread out into so many different areas when we serve such a large community, but we have, you really had the discipline and your team had the discipline to make this priority 1A. So I just really want to acknowledge the work that's done in getting us to a point of stability. Like you said, this is just the beginning, like, right? We're finally at a point where we can actually now really do the work of making sure students have good IEPs, that they are getting the services they need, with our CFO having the foresight to budget, you know, all these new positions for to hire teachers that are going to serve this influx of students. This takes a whole village, and it takes our constituents and our families as well to share the needs with us so that we can take that and turn it into something that's going to serve our kids. So just from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Whatever happens with this vote, I'm confident this work will continue. It has to. That is like our moral, like imperative, like we have to. I am sorry to the families that did not get served. We are doing better now, and we are committed to doing better. So just thank you so much, and I hope that as we go through all this, we continue to keep our eye on these students, and I know we will, like, there's no doubt we will. So just thank you, and thank you to the community for being here, and let's just keep doing the work.
And I think one of the things I think is worth sharing is, you know, this is a 10-person team. You know, what helped us progress in this fashion over this period of time was clear communication to the administration, what your expectations were. That's very helpful. You being, y'all being receptive to different ideas, different approaches to the work, in allowing flexibility with how we moved early on in the process. I need Richard to raise his hand. He's, one of the first calls I made after January 3rd, which is when my contract was approved, was to move Richard out of operations into special education. That was done, I think, the second week in January, and that was really in an effort to begin to take burden off the individuals who were leading the work and allow... and allow the analytics to kind of run separately, build systems up. And what's interesting about this timeline, as I sit here and reflect on it, is the first couple of months, there's like a stabilization. Then you see the flip in, in time and past due. That's a very important milestone, a distinguished milestone. Because now you're able to, to better support the inflow and control better, kind of just the cadence of the work. And so that's a huge, huge, huge milestone that was accomplished in May and then again in July. And, and, you know, we're trending in the right direction, but there's a lot of work to be done. I don't think anything here keeps us from doing what we were already setting out to do. And again, it, it does take a 10-person team to get this done on this side, but also a hundreds and hundreds of people per team on the other side to actually get the work done. So I appreciate the confidence in, in us, you know, working through this. You know, we came at y'all with some pretty aggressive ideas and thank you for supporting them along the way.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura. All right. So last call for questions. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Trustee Sapata.
So as, as you mentioned, President Singh acknowledged that we owned it. When we found out we owned it, we didn't walk away from it. We didn't deny it because we did not know. It's like parents who do not understand their test scores that the kids get. We did not know that what was happening internally. But when, the minute we were told, we acted immediately to help address the problem and to ensure, I have, I have a student who has disability and I, I had those same challenges. Myself, I had those challenges. So it's been in existence for a very, very long time. I'm just kind of bothered that our TEA does not even acknowledge the work that we've done to get, to address the problem. So I hope that he has a change of heart as we listen to all this because our staff have gone above and beyond our leadership with our superintendent. All of us, the team of 10, have taken this very, very serious. What if we challenge the letter? What if we say we've done all these things? Can you give us, I mean, we were not all together. We all started this together, but we were not there when it happened, right? I mean, while it was existing. Can we say, give us a year? And if we don't do better, then we'll do the letter, you know? But it's not fair. It's just not fair. And so I just felt I need to say that because I think that we have done above and beyond to address that. We are creating a new culture of transparency and accountability at every level. And that should mean something. So if TA is listening, please, you know, sleep on it, chew on it and help us. You know, send us another letter, you know? But we would welcome that. Thank you.
Trustee Lugo.
So not a question, y'all, just a, a comment. So Trustee Sapata, something that you said and something that Trustee Kaufman mentioned earlier. For me, it reminds me that, what are we here to talk about, right? And I know while many of the public, while some of the public comments, as well as some of our questions, have been focused around, you know, what is the impact for the administration? What's the impact for the board? That at the end of the day, it goes back to, to what President Singh said. You know, we're, we want to do right by kids, all kids. We want special education improvements to not just be about reducing our, the backlog. That, that's not what special education is about, right? It certainly is why we're here today, but that's not where it ends. And I think that's what I've heard from you. And although there, in, in the, what, March letter, there was no obvious or written evidence that governance was an issue. And in fact, I really like slide four because when you compare 2023 to 2022, what stands out for me is that in 2022, the superintendent had a contract that allowed unilateral hiring. So I just find that interesting. You know, there's no correlation or, right? So I found that fascinating. But yeah, although there's no evidence that governance was an issue or a barrier to making that, to kind of bringing us into this backlog and out of compliance, it also connects with what Trustee Sapata mentioned and what Superintendent Segura noted that, you know, once he was on board, he immediately identified and was able to put someone in place who could put data in front of him and in front of his administration and as well as us. You can't monitor what you can't measure, right? And so I guess those are just some observations along the way. Just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Trustee Lugo. All right. So it doesn't look there, there's any more questions from trustees. So thank you all very much for this really informative presentation. Appreciate it. At this time, we will now recess the open meeting at 8:31 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, and 551.071. When we are finished with the executive session, we'll briefly return to the open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. So thank you very much for joining us and have a great evening. All right. So we will now reconvene the open meeting at 10:54 PM. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Lugo to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at 10:55 PM. Thank you.